I'd like to welcome everybody to the Mainland Planning Commission for Tuesday, May 15, 2008. We're going to forego with the invocation of pledge since we just went through it just about an hour and a half ago or less. Meeting procedures, well, wait a minute here. I'll do that after the general business. Planning Commission announcements, anything, Ms. Thompson? None there? First thing is to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held March 20, 2018, subject to any changes or corrections.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion in two seconds?
Uh huh.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Public hearings, zoning applications. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated for each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. And the first thing we have is ZM 3753, 310 Old Jessup Road rezoned. And what I'd like to have is a motion to-
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to defer this until July 10, meeting 2018.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous. And we'll see you July 10. Next item, ZM 3756, 5970 Golden Isles Parkway rezoned. Public hearing upon, excuse me, puberty here, I think. Public hearing upon a request to rezon approximately 48.97 acres located at 5970 Golden Isles Parkway, parcel number 03-15790, from planned development PD to medium residential MR for a multifamily residential project. Thomas J. Purdy, Dwight Development Group, application and agent for Travis K. Ostrom, owner. Ms. Leaf.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. This is a zoning map amendment, a rezoning, as the chairman stated, at 5970 Golden Isles Parkway. The other name for this project is Bergen Woods, which is the multifamily project they're proposing. And so this is, the total parcel that this would affect would be 48.97 acres. And I just wanted to make that clarification because there were kind of two different numbers that kind of floated around in the applicant's materials and the staff report. So I just wanted to clarify that the entire parcel that this rezon would affect is 48.97, but the development area that they're currently proposing for the development today is 22.38. But for your purposes, for the rezoned, that 48.97 is what applies to the rezon. The existing zoning is a planned development. It's a Golden Isles Gateway tract, which was, for those who might be familiar with it, it was a several thousand acre PD that was done some years ago. And there's been a few, several amendments to it over the years, and we actually are seeing a little bit more rezones to kind of a conventional zoning from that PD. The existing property is currently undeveloped. It's a vacant piece. They are looking to do a multifamily project on this site. The comprehensive plan, we're still utilizing the 2008 comp plan since our new one won't be adopted till later this year. And the future land use map does have this area as high-density residential. And I'll show that a little bit more on some slides in a bit. So here is the property where the star is. So it does, about Interstate 95, it's north of the exit, and it's off of Golden Isles Parkway. Just to, so the property boundary here and just to the north of the site is the public safety complex. And then to the south, this is a property zone, freeway commercial. And then all of this is PD. And they are looking to rezon from PD to medium residential. And their proposed development is currently to develop 252 multifamily residential units. And they would be currently developing 22.38 acres of the parcel. The maximum density allowed on 48.97 acres is 16 units per acre, and that's the maximum density per the MR zone. And so on that acreage, there would be 783 units that could potentially be on that site at that 16 units per acre. And then their current proposal for the 22.38 would be 358 units. So the current proposal would be less than what the maximum is allowed, would be 252 is what they're currently proposing. And just another note, this is their draft site plan. They have applied for site plan approval that would go before the Mainland Planning Commission. That is not on your agenda tonight. There are some joint water and sewer matters that they still need to address before the site plan can come before you all. But for rezoning purposes, this is an application that can come forward to you, but you will most likely see a site plan, you know, in front of you in the future, and that would be required of any of the development that would be there. But this is their proposed site plan. This is Golden Isles Parkway here. And they are proposing to have a lane here that would turn off onto this access road. They do have some amenities in this area. This is where they're going to have a pool, mailboxes, a clubhouse, office. And then coming into the site, they do have a play area. They do have their retention back here, and there's a couple other sites. Then all their other buildings kind of line the perimeter. They also are proposing to have a walkway, a walking trail, a dog trail that would kind of circle the site. And this is just the 22 acres. The rest of the site is to the south, over here. This is photos of the site from Golden Isles Parkway. This is, I was standing across from the site, across Golden Isles Parkway, and just looking north. So here's the property right here. There is an existing buffer of some trees, but the middle of the site is primarily cleared. They're looking to develop. And then this is, again, just looking across Golden Isles Parkway at the site. And this is just a little more, shows a little bit more of the zoning of the area. So here is where the star is, where the site is located. Freeway commercial is to the south. There is kind of a mix across the way. You've got some limited commercials, an FA zone, and then to the north, as I said, is that public safety complex. The current PD zoning is that Golden Isles Gateway tract that I talked about. The way that this Golden Isles Gateway tract, there was several different kind of pods in this tract. And so in order to develop a project like they would like to develop on this site, the way that the PD reads is that 25% of the residential areas can be developed as multifamily. And 764 acres is proposed for multifamily. And this is across this very large, several thousand acre PD. And then the multifamily maximum density is 10 units per acre. So that was kind of the bigger reason for wanting to rezon is they are looking to have 16 units per acre on this site, and currently the limitation is 10 units per acre. And also working within the PD, since a lot of it was based on these pods, because it was a master plan development, now that there's some different ownership, it's a little bit trickier to develop within. So that's one of the reasons they would be interested in rezoning to a conventional zoning district. And the future land use map, this is a regional center here in this kind of bluish turquoise color. This is right around the exit. So these are, this is an area according to the land use map that is, you know, is an area that you want to see commercial, transitional to higher density. And then just to the north, interestingly, this parcel, which you don't always really see on the land use maps, that it's this parcel specific, but this property is allocated as high-density residential. And then just to the north in the blue is where that public safety complex is. So the high-density residential is suitable for 10 to 16 dwelling units per acre. That is what the future land use text in the 2008 comp plan states. So this zoning to MR does meet that. And then the intent is to have MR, or this high-density residential, serve as a transitional area between more intensive and less intensive uses. And then the recommended zoning is R6, M6, MH6, MR, which is this one, HR and PD. And so that's just a little bit about the project. And then here are your motions tonight, your possible motions. And then staff is recommending that this be approved as presented, primarily because the future land use map and the comp plan really speaks to this use and this type of zoning. And that is our recommendation on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I know Jonathan McDill from Roberts Civil Engineering is here tonight for the applicant. If you have any questions of the applicant team, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seems pretty straightforward. It's a commercial corridor.
April.
Good use for the property. Would the applicant like to come forward and request action, please?
Hey, I'm Jonathan McDill. I'm with Roberts Engineering. I'm here representing Dwight Development Group, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. I don't have any. Site plan looks straightforward on that. Any questions for the applicant? Good. We'll move on. Thank you very much. We may come back to you if need be. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak against this application? Mr. Smith?
I don't see a crowd, so I'll pull them up.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Yeah, I want to. Okay, I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. I'm speaking against this application, for starters, because it seems to be incomplete. It does not include all of the items required for a zoning map amendment according to this six-page form that should have been filled out and submitted with it. And you can ask the county attorney if he's here. Nope. Mr. Worley's not here. No one's here to advise you on this. But you have here an incomplete application. Why is it incomplete? It does not include the application itself with the names, addresses, phone numbers, and email addresses of the applicant, the owner, the agent, the surveyor, et cetera. It does not include the required supplemental information, including, quote, "the justification for request," unquote, and other required information. It does not include a deed for the property. It does not include the required ownership certification or an agent authorization signed by the owner. It does, however, include a site plan on which the owner slash developer is identified as the Dwight Development Group, which, please correct me if I'm wrong, has not yet purchased the property. In other words, staff has apparently supplied to you an incomplete application. That is not your problem. It is their problem. But if you recommend this application, if you support this, that becomes your problem. Even if all the required information is in the packet supplied to the MPC by county staff, and I don't believe it is, it is not in the information available to the public. And as this is a public hearing item, the public should have the same information available to the MPC members. That in itself should be sufficient reason for you to defer consideration of this item if you had the stuff which you don't have. Also, please note that this application is for 22.38 acres of a 48.97 acre parcel, and that the aerial photo zoning map attached to the staff report shows the entire 48.49 acre property and does not indicate the 22.38 acre portion subject to rezoning. There are other reasons why this application should be deferred or why you should not recommend that the county commission approve this application. Among other things, why does Glen County need more apartments at this time? The preamble to our zoning ordinance warns against premature development, things that are done before they are really necessary. And I could go on and on with problems in this application, but I'll stop with just a few things. On the second page of the staff report, I'm hoping that I will hear your finding on item number one, whether the zoning decision will permit a use that is suitable. And the staff has given you information, but that you need to make a determination. We need to hear you make that. Item two, on page two, you need to find whether the zoning decision will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property, including the property still owned by the owner of the entire property. What's going to happen to the other 26 acres if this is done? And item number four is the most important one, whether the zoning decision will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And what the staff tells you there is that the property will remain residential. It's not residential. There are no residences on it. What you need to determine is will this proposed density increase burdensome, create burdensome impacts? You need to decide that and to discuss that in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. One thing, Mr. Smith, the Mainland Planning Commission does not do is we do not ask for the completed application with the signatures, the six pages you were talking about. And they do not go forward with it to us until they have a complete application. We're trusting them to do that. I filled these out before and have been, I won't say cold on the carpet, but they do require a complete application, and they have, I think, a set of that if you would like to review it.
Sure, I can address that.
Okay. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, we did review the application for completeness, and I know the issues and questions that were brought up in the public comment from Mr. Smith. I did double-check the file to make sure that we did address all of those, and we do have all the documents he had mentioned. They are in this file. We haven't traditionally given everything in the file to the MPC, but this is part of the public record, and he's welcome to inspect that, to contact the office to inspect this, as well as it's open for open records request as well, it's public documents. But everything is in here that's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak against this rezon? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed zoning decision as presented.
What? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm just waiting for a second.
For me?
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Just to clarify, that staff is satisfied that the application is complete?
Yes, sir. We are satisfied that it meets all of the completeness requirements. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is site plans, which is not a public hearing item. First item, SP 3748, Mike Murphy Kia. Consider site plan approval for 13-foot, 657-square-foot addition to the existing service wing of the Mike Murphy Kia automobile dealership. Property is 2.02 acres located at 6150 Altama Avenue and zoned planned development, PD. Parcel ID 03-00954, Robert Usery, Usery Rule Architects, PC agent for Mike Murphy, Rule 62 Enterprises LLC, owner and applicant.
Good evening. I'm Maurice Postal, Planner 3 with the County Community Development Department. As mentioned before, this is a site plan approval request for an addition to an existing service wing of the Mike Murphy dealership. This is the zoning map. As you can see, there's commercial directly to the south and residential all around it. This is a view of the dealership from Altama. And this is a view from Canal Crossing. And as you can see, the additional will be to the left part of the existing auto repair As mentioned before, this is only a 657-square-foot extension of the existing 3,807-square-foot garage. And the site was rezoned as a planned development in 2011, and the owner is going to retain the variances to the buffering requirements. This is the site plan. These are the elevations of the building, including the new additions. These are your possible motions, and we are recommending approval of the application as presented.
Any questions for staff?
The applicant is present and available for questions.
Okay. This is such a small addition to this. This is the kind of things that I wish you'd kind of go through staff review and approval on it, so.
Which this might soon.
Yeah. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward, please, or their agent, and request action?
I'm Robert Usery, architect. I am the agent for the project. Tracy Moreland is the project architect, and she's here to answer any questions she may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Pretty straightforward and simple. We like them like that, so. Need to do some of those on the island, maybe.
Yeah, we do.
You had to bring Tracy out for this? I mean, you know.
The big guns.
She's the big gun. She's the brains in the operation, and brought her all the way here. That's impressive. Thank you, Robert.
No question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners? All in favor of the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Item number five, SP 3750, Discount Tires. Consider the site plan approval for the construction of 8,192-square-foot discount tire sales and service store. Project site is 1.63 acre portion of a 7.065 acre parcel at 399 Canal Road and zoned highway commercial, HC. Parcel ID 03-03609, Francis Deo, H&amp;T Consultants, Inc., agent for John Callaway, Callaway Land Ventures LLC, and Brunswick Canal LLC, owner and Scott Fornier, Hale Properties LLC, applicant. Mr. Postal?
As mentioned, this is a site plan approval request for a new Discount Tire store at the corner of Canal Road and Golden Isles Parkway. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, to the east of the site is the Canal Crossing Planned Development, and to the west is mostly forest agriculture. The site itself is mostly highway commercial with a small bit of forest agriculture at the north end of the parcel. This is a view of the site from Canal Road, looking north. This is the intersection of Golden Isles Parkway and Canal Road, looking west towards the site. As mentioned, the site itself is a 1.63 acre portion of a larger seven-acre parcel. There is an expedited subdivision request before the community development department going on right now. So if that's approved, this will be a separate parcel. And there is a sign indicated on the site plan which would require a signed variance where it to be ever constructed. It's a developer sign. This is the site plan that you've reviewed. These are the elevations for the newly constructed store. And these are your possible motions, and the department is requesting approval of the application as presented. And I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here with us tonight.
Okay. And the signed variance is part of the application also when we approve?
No, not before you tonight. It would have to be a separate application.
Okay. I'm with you. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and request action, please?
Good evening. I'm Stanley Hill with H&amp;T Consultants, civil engineers, on behalf of Discount Tire. And we've been working with staff to present a site plan that would be in conformance with the regulations, and they've been very helpful, and we're very appreciative to be here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I think this is the at least third site plan we've seen, if not fourth. They were all the way back, I think, from 2008, possibly, or 2007. I remember I was on at that time when I had it. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend a motion that we approve site plan 3750 as presented.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Thank you very much. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And I will abstain from this one. Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Wait a minute. I lost my agenda here. Last item, SP 3757, Settlers Cove. Consider a site plan approval for 12 duplex buildings, 24 units. The property is 2.52 acres located at 136 Glendale Drive and zoned MR. Parcel ID 03-03659, Clint Miller, applicant and owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager, again. This is called Settlers Cove at 136 Glendale Drive, and it's 2.52 acres. And the existing zoning is medium residential. This was actually rezoned by the Board of County Commissioners on April 19th, and so originally it was an R9 zone site, and they've rezoned to medium residential. It is an existing undeveloped vacant property, and they are looking to do two-family dwelling units. So actually, there is going to be a total of 23 units and 9.12 units per acre. And this is the site off of Glendale Drive, right here. And as this map shows, the GIS currently still shows this property as R9, because the GIS will not make a correction to the zoning until a resolution is signed by the Board of County Commissioners, and that still needs to be done. So even though the decision was made, the GIS still reflects that. So we just wanted to make this note on the GIS map that shows that this was done on April And this is the subject property. This is the property just on the right-hand side. This is from Glendale Drive. It's currently just kind of dirt access onto the property, and it's currently vacant. So they are considering site plan approval for 23 two-family dwellings within 11 buildings. So there are 10 duplex buildings, and then one building is a triplex. And they are also looking to do a storage building that would have a separate entrance off of Glendale. As I mentioned, the property was rezoned on April 19th. And they are proposing buffers, type A along the sides, type E buffer along Glendale Drive, and there's a 25-foot setback from the marsh, and then a type D buffer around the dumpster. And this is a proposed site plan that is before you. So this is the primary access into the property from Glendale. And then this is the second access into the storage building right here. And I will note, there is a condition that staff is proposing for this application, and I have talked with both the owner and the applicant's engineer about this. The DR, the development review team, talked about this during our meetings. Technically, you can have up to two- Technically, you can have up to two entrances onto a site, but really, the purpose of having the two entrances is really to help traffic flow around a site. So what the concern is here is that, you know, the secondary entrance only serves the small storage building. You know, our feeling from the DRT team was that this entrance would be more appropriate if it connected somewhere internal to the property and helped, you know, move traffic through the property. Or if the storage building did not have this access and instead was accessed, you know, through this main drive, if there was another internal way to get to the storage building. So it's still on the plan. We have talked to the applicants. They chose to request of the Mayland Planning Commission approval of the secondary driveway, but I wanted to make the commission aware of the concerns that came out of the DRT team. And then just another note, this is another condition that I had added to the staff report, and this is just something they're also aware of. But currently, there are two legal lots on this site. This is one tax parcel, but there's two legal lots, and some of the buildings are going to be proposed across the lot line. And so our requirements are to consolidate the property and consolidate those two lots into one before issuing a building permit. So that is just another condition that they would need to do before they were issued a building permit for the site. And this is elevation of what the duplex buildings would look like. And then here are your possible motions. And then, as I mentioned, other recommended motion is to approve it, subject to two conditions. One is the driveway to the storage building to be removed, and that's up for your discussion if you're comfortable with that condition or you'd like to do something different. And then secondary is the two legal lots shall be consolidated into one lot before issuing sort of building permit. And if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, and I know that both the applicant's engineer and the applicant are here this evening to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have a question about the, you were talking about the driveway to be removed for the storage facilities. Is, okay. I mean, the subdivision itself, I believe, or subdivision, the development meets the access requirements. Is there an issue as far as the ordinance go with having the additional access for the storage buildings?
So up to two access, you have two access points onto the property. So it's not prohibited to have the secondary access. Just our concern from DRT is that, you know, it adds a second access point onto a road that does serve industrial uses, other commercial uses, other residential. So you're just adding another access point onto a road that may not be necessary for the site. Because typically, you like to, you know, it's typical to have two entrance points to help traffic flow within a site, or if you have, you know, delivery trucks coming out of one entrance. It is different reasons to have the two entrance points. That's really where we were coming from, was we didn't feel like this, really, the secondary access really served the entire site. And we would like to either see it serve the rest of the site or be removed and have that storage unit accessed via the interior of the property through a driveway that comes off of the main access.
Okay, well, I know dealing with, on St. Simon's, more specifically, like South Harrington, they prefer less access points on that, and this is a storage building. I don't see it really being used a whole lot as far as, you know, a lot of traffic anyway, going in and out. But as far as the crunch Monday morning between getting the kids off to school and people trying to get out, that's...
And looking at that site plan, huh, where on earth would you put that secondary road?
Yeah, that's where we...
Well, I mean, I think I know my own answer, and you'd have to remove one of those buildings.
Or, yeah, or redesign in a way that you could reconfigure.
That would have to be the most expensive secondary road that's ever been proposed. And once again, it's for an outbuilding that's going to be a storage building. It's not...
And Commissioner Murphy, if I could supplement that answer, it doesn't have to be an access road. If it comes off of that internal drive, it can be a driveway to the storage building.
Please show me where.
Well, we did talk with them, and they can shift some of those buildings down to create the width required between the buildings to allow a paved drive back there to the storage unit and reorient it so that the entrance is facing that. One of the additional issues raised by our traffic review team was that the storage unit has been told that it is for the people who will be living in the duplexes. So now for them, if they need to access their storage building with a vehicle, they have to get onto Glendale and then get back off Glendale as opposed to using an interior driveway to that building. So that was the concern, and it doesn't have to meet public or private road standards to be a driveway.
But then all the rest of the time, you're going to cram all these buildings closer to each other, which you're going to make that a little more difficult for the people who do live there. Sound, noise, whatever the case may be, the grass growing between it because there's not going to be enough room, whatever the case may be. All for this road, is what you're saying.
Well, it's an access drive, and the concern was how many, as Chairman Neville alluded to, how many access points do you have off the main road? And so where you can eliminate some, and it makes sense to have an interior access, that's what we try to recommend to staff, to eliminate the points for conflict on the main thoroughfare. And as Ms. Leaf said, we gave that recommendation to the owner, and they looked at it, they did consider it, and they wanted to move it forward for your consideration without that showing. So that's why she highlighted it in her report.
Gotcha. I could understand if the main entrance did make a loop and come back through the storage area and have a secondary point coming back out on Glendale, but it does not do that. And the amount of times it's going to be used is mostly on weekends. It's probably one of the worst ideas I've ever heard in my life, but that's just how I feel about it, and I'll vote accordingly.
Any other questions for staff or comments? Thank you. Would the applicant or their agent like to come forward and request action, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Clint Miller, and I am the owner of this property. As you can see, we've had tremendous help from all the staffing people, and Jonathan's my engineer on this project. And when we first came in for the rezoning, we actually had proposed to do 24 units. And we have now finalized that down to 23, trying to create more green space between the buildings and just trying to keep a better flow, a better overall layout of the property. When I first went into this, I actually requested what would be the most efficient zoning that I should try and reach for based on the layout that you see today, having a secondary storage building, and also having the ability to be able to have the two accesses. We tried to align this based on what we heard from traffic and what Jonathan has gathered from everyone. We've tried to align our main entrance with Pickrick to help control the traffic problems that if there would be any. Glendale's not a real high-traffic road. There's just not a lot of through-traffic through there. However, that, I'm not a traffic study expert, so I'm not even going to get into that. However, I greatly appreciate everyone moving forward with the approval of my project, but I would like to keep the driveway off of Glendale. It is going to be, part of it that you see is going to be storage. I'm going to use part of that for storing materials as I'm building these because I'm going to be, it may be a one- or two-year project. Part of it is going to be used for tenants if they would like to use it. The other part is going to be used for small lawn equipment and things like that that will be used to maintain the property. So the reason I wanted that second driveway was so we would have access to pull out and pull around with our landscape trailer to be able to keep a lot of the landscaping done. I don't see it being, it's not a place that's going to have traffic all day, one or two times a day in and out. I can't tell you how much traffic's going to be in and out of the storage building, but I can tell you that it is going to be for a minimal-use facility. Does anybody have any questions for me? I just wanted to clarify that part at least and see if I can help clarify anything that you may have.
What would be the ramifications of moving? What would be the ramifications of not having that? What would you have to do?
Get rid of the building? I mean, you can see, I'm not going to speak for Jonathan, but I have been contacted by no one about removing a building or trying to squeeze these things closer together. The ramifications of me removing one of these buildings, it throws the whole site plan off, and it turns this project into a much more costly, because if I'm having to add an internal road or driveway, now we have to come up with a much more strenuous drainage plan, because right now, the way Jonathan has it engineered, we have a very smooth, the curbing and gutter, everything flows down, and we're able to do this nicely. If I try to squeeze anything together, right now, we're working at 12 to 15 feet between buildings, which is where I wanted to try to keep it. If I try to squeeze three feet in between each one of those to pick up a driveway, these things are going to be slammed on top of each other, and I just would not want to see that happen.
Yeah, I don't see where you could even shift the buildings without infringing on setbacks.
Oh, you could shift all of them.
That's right.
Yes, sir, but you see on that top corner, we're at the setback line. On the back of the fifth building, we're at the setback line. Now, I'm not touching the setback line. I have a few feet to work, but we're talking having to pull a driveway through, and I think we'd be killing a lot of our green space between buildings because now we'd be adding a 12-to-15-foot driveway.
And the simple drainage design tends to work better and a lot less maintenance.
That's what our original goal was going into this. The reason I came up with this design, Jonathan, I thought that the drainage was just smooth, and I think everything flows very well. And I think our main traffic point is aligning across from Pickrick. I think we've done everything we can to try and meet all of the goals that were expected of this project.
And it got about five foot of fall front to back, so it's natural.
It is very, and it will even have natural on our sewer. We don't have to have a pump station or anything, so it worked out very well.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
And I am willing to get the rezoning. On the lot...
Recombination survey?
Yes, sir. I had no idea. When I bought it, I saw one parcel. Stephanie brought that to my attention, and I told her I had no problem at all getting that done, whatever needed to be done. So I leaned upon her to make sure I get that done correctly.
Okay, yeah, I think your building permit will be subject to that.
It will. That's no problem.
Then you can submit it with the application, though.
I've got a while. I've got plenty of time.
Good. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve application SP 3757 with the following condition. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the two legal zoning lots shall be consolidated into one lot. Period.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Meeting adjourned.
And it's done.